Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Well, we'll go ahead and do the public hearing for the water rate increase. This was advertised in the Rockville paper in June for tonight's meeting at 6:30, so we should stay, I guess adhere to that. Is there anything that I need to specifically do? I mean, we have the script, but there's no one...
Right, there's Exhibit A that was published, and I mean, that's what you guys are proposing to adopt.
Okay. The public hearing is for comments from the people in the community.
Ask if anybody has any comments, I guess, or questions.
Okay.
On behalf of the people of Rockville, we support your rate increase.
That's great.
Oh, that's fun.
So, Kathy, this is Amish Propose Amendment, these are the proposed here rates we're seeing right here.
Yes.
If you want to sign this one, it's not marked up. The other one had exhibit stamped, but I think so.
Okay.
The ordinance.
Well, seeing how we have no public...
I gave them a non-stamped one.
Oh, okay.
No additional public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And with that, we have the ordinance, which is, it has been published, the rates. This new ordinance, it says, "Whereas the town of Marshall and the ads desires of amending certain ordinances concerning water rates, charges, and fees rendered by the town of Marshall," said ordinance being ordinance number 2022-1.
It said be 2023-1, sorry about that.
2023-1, you can correct your copy on that.
No, 2023-2.
That's what mine said, it was 2023.
At the top, is either one at the top?
Yeah, gotcha. The ordinance being ordinance number 2023-2. Now, therefore, it is ordained by the town council of Marshall that upon passage of this ordinance, due publication of this notice is required. That Appendix A of said ordinance shall be amended as followed, and see the attached exhibit. So, we're at the point now that I would accept a motion that we move on the rate study that was presented to us by Steve Brock, and I guess I'll hear from the board.
I will make a motion, but I do have one question there. So, these are, I want to go back just right quick on the figures. These are pretty much pervading what Brock had recommended on...
That's exactly what he recommended. That's exactly what he recommended. Only thing we changed was that hydrant fee that the town pays.
That actually went down a little bit, I think, and it got it to up a little bit.
Just very little.
Yeah, yeah. It was like 63 something, and we just did around nice enough.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions, Dale? I don't have any.
No, that's it. I just want, I just want to make sure that's pretty much all of your filing. It looked like what I saw earlier, but I wanted to show.
Yeah, it was.
I didn't know he played the figure a little bit, you know, jostling around.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second that motion that Dale made.
I like the motion. Passes.
We have a motion and a second that we accept the ordinance for increasing the water rates as proposed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have to do a motion? This is the second reading, so we're good.
It's your second reading, yeah, you're fine, yeah. Here's the appendix A that attaches to it.
And then these will go for actual readings, the August readings, which will be for July usage. I will still use the old ones when I do this too.
So, it'll be an August reading, they won't get billed into, well, you pretty much get them out right away after you read what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I'll send it out the first of August, so that's when it'll go actual.
I'm going to email you the proof of publishing. We're waiting for the paper to send us.
Oh, I got one from them, they sent me the bill.
Oh, they sent it directly to you, that's why they didn't send it to me.
Yeah, I got that. Matter of fact, it's in here, the paper.
Okay. That's why they didn't send it to me.
I only got enough out of it, I just think they were...
Okay, there you go, Kathy.
Ask Ashley today, and she said, "We never got that."
Two places to sign for you.
I was hoping that out.
If Darla shows up, she can sign that if she wishes.
She signed it since she wasn't...
She could, if she shows up tonight, she could, I guess.
Even though she didn't vote for it?
I mean, she'd have to weigh in on her vote on it, yeah.
Okay.
And you could re-bring it up and have her weigh in also, if you wanted to be unanimous. You don't need it, but...
Yeah. Give me the claims, and we'll go ahead and move through those.
So, do you know how long the power's off at the pumping station here, Tom? Our generator ran out there, you only had days of everything? Did you ever look at that out there?
No.
The reason I'm questioning it is, those generators are a long run, sometimes used over the water for a while now. And specifically that one, was pumping water the whole time, you know, pretty much. So, it might not be a bad idea, just saying next time you get out there, if you've got a set of keys for it, pop it open and check the oil level on it. If you don't have keys, call me, I got keys.
You got keys, don't you?
I think so.
I was gonna say, I think he's got keys. Oh, I didn't give you, oh, I gave you the wrong thing. This is the claims. No wonder, no wonder you guys are looking at me all straight.
Well, I was looking at it, and I thought, "Well, you wanted to do balances, I was doing balances."
Well, I'll put my niggas on the counter.
Yeah, there you go.
Right off.
Call me, I got keys.
Oh, that's, I was just like, you're both kind of looking at those like, "All right."
Okay.
See, I put them all together, and I thought I'd keep them straight, but...
Is your cat working?
So, do I need to put the date that it was in the paper on this thing? Or this just says?
I'd put it at the bottom, yeah. But I think it's like June 22nd or something like that.
July.
Yeah. I just crossed out July, it's a June. I wasn't sure what day that, I think Ashley told me it ran on the 22nd of June.
I think that's right, because they ran both of them together.
Yeah.
I'll look and see what...
You get the other one too, because I brought that with me as far as the article.
Yeah, they always send a copy when they send the bill.
Okay.
And I sent the checks out last week.
Buy stamps?
Hi, Paula.
Do you buy stamps where they run out?
I'm going to tomorrow, I've got a check. They go up to eight. One thing I really need to enforce is water.
Yeah.
Is the pot lid still working?
Yeah.
Something's there?
Is it 53 cents? 50, maybe it's 51 cents.
It's going to? I thought it was 60.
For postcard stamp.
Oh, gotcha.
They went up three cents, didn't they? 66.
They're going on the eighth, so tomorrow, I got a blank check over there to go, haven't decided how many I'm gonna buy yet.
Well, believe it or not, I still think it's a bargain. I can't drive to California for 66 cents.
No.
Or Alaska.
You're right, that's true, just hope it gets there.
But you can drive to Bloomingdale's.
Or the South of Marcella.
Let's see, the water, I'll listen to that one. It was $48 for the dog ordinance one that ran. The other one's like 100 or something.
Yeah, we had to run multiple things on the other one, though.
Yeah. I mean, that would be, that was 175.
Although I will tell you, they're a bargain compared to some of the papers up north.
Uh, 621.
The claims for the town, $2,108.85, and for the water department, $6,381.70. In old business, ByState has been here and done the patching for the town, so I think everything is in pretty good shape. We still have Elm Street, which is the worst of the town, but they did a nice job, and did get, especially North Main.
That looks good.
So, I thought they did well. And they did well up in the addition, too.
Yeah.
They took care of that. The child's swing set up at the park was installed last week, and so the swings will be put up as soon as we can get to it. I'm waiting for a quote from UMAC for the removal of the wellhouse up on Park Avenue. Talked to Ronnie Black, he said they could do that, and then they would take care of making sure that all the plumbing is capped off. From what I understand from talking to Larry Harmon, the line that went from that pump house west of town was cut when the new line came in, so there shouldn't be any connection to that.
Should be dead.
Should be dead, but there is a line from the wellhouse over to the main that goes north up in the addition, and I want them to go ahead and stub that off when they're taking that wellhouse down. I have sent pictures and information to Electric Plus out of Bloomington, a company that Westler got in contact with for the replacement of the light on the water tower, the flag, the LED light. And so I'll wait to hear back from them on a quote for that. And then I also have called, I guess that's all on old business. Does anybody have anything else under old business?
I've got for you.
Yeah.
What we stand at, our town's signing here.
Good question.
When I called them last time, I've been back and forth with them, finally the guy called me, I think it was the first name is, and internal problems in his office and the stuff didn't get ordered. So, he said, "If you want to cancel the order, you can, we're out six to eight weeks because nothing's been ordered." He said he had his stuff, whatever's printed, ready to go, but all the PVC stuff has to be ordered.
So, is that just debris later that needs to be picked up, cleaned up?
That was under their contract.
That they were, originally, they said they'd clean up everything, but Jason went ahead and cleaned up all the extra debris, and he just laid some of it there so that, you know, that he picked up.
It's kind of badass, isn't it?
I know. And I told him that. I said, "Well, thank heavens, we cleaned up the majority of it." And I said, "You know, I'm not gonna cancel the order because you have everything that we need, so I'm gonna have to start from square one and have someone, you know, make the design and everything."
So, we're saying there's just junk.
So, yeah, we're saying there's just junk. So, I'm hoping maybe by August, we'll see it. He apologized, and I'm hoping maybe he will, I'm gonna kind of address when I pay the other half of it, if there's any type of a discount that we get for being so late and everything.
Yeah, I'm doing the cleaning.
Yeah, so...
There's another thing I knew, something I didn't hear, that water running on the corner already, call the location. Anything, you come to that there by the girls' house right there? Remember something about water leaks on that?
Yes, okay. Yeah, I had UMAC in, they got into the meter pit, and there was a leak in the meter pit on our side. So, UMAC went ahead and fixed that. So, that was what the sound of the running water was, was actually...
Right, well, I mean, you talked about that. We had a video of it, you can hear it, yeah.
So, UMAC has fixed that. They did that day or so after our meeting.
So, okay, well, I'm really driving, so did that affect our gallons then? Daily gallons?
It brought things back down, but then we turned around and had the leak on the line up at Pearson's again, right behind that. And so then now, the last week of June, we started coming down, but then now, the weekend and stuff, it started going back up again. But see, you had the holidays, been hot, kids playing in the water, I don't know.
So, I think they've got Pearson's fixed now. They put in all-new yoke, everything there for the meter, so they felt pretty good about that.
Hell, they are turning it in about 24.
Oh, at least, yeah, yeah. On both sides of the road.
Yeah.
The sinkhole that you brought up, I told Ronnie about that. They did look at it, they were gonna have to call in location, back that out.
Right.
And he went to Oklahoma on vacation, so when he gets back, that and the wellhouse are the two things that I have for you.
Well, I got my foot, time to get him up, debris down between the side walking through, but it got, it can't mow, it's just, Thomas says, man.
Yeah, I've talked to Ronnie, and they say they're gonna come in and go ahead and work all that up, seat it, and straw it down. Two or three times I've called him on it.
He's concerned he can't mow, he says, "I drive by like that nature right there."
He can mow.
He can't mow it.
No, no.
Kind of need to hold those guys toes too far, a little bit on that.
Well, the best we can, yeah. I mean, I'd be, I'm in phone contact with him, you know, two or three times a month for various reasons, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. New business, after the storm, boy, the people, the homeowners really did a great job for the most part of getting things cleaned up. We have a couple of spots, one being right next door, and that's where I'd like to talk to you. If the guy's not gonna mow the yard, and he's not gonna kill the weed, or take the weeds down, and he's got limbs and things from that tree, that's his responsibility, then we need to probably serve him some paperwork.
That house is turned over, and his toilet's exposed back there, too.
Yeah.
Going to have holes back there, but...
The tree, right across from the church, that big maple, lost a large limb, blocked the road during that storm. We cut it up, we being the fire department, and moved it over onto the church parking area there. It is our tree, in other words, it's on the outside of the sidewalk, our side, so I have called Veterans Tree Service twice now, wanting a quote on for them to come in and take that tree down. So, I'll just wait to hear back from them, because I don't think there is a good option being. I can imagine they're just completely snowed under, there's not another good option right So, that, and there's a few places that have still some piles of limbs. I know the neighbor down on the corner, he had a big one come down on his house, and they've cut it up, there's big piles there, and I don't know what his plans are. So, any help we can give them, we would definitely do that for that.
Yeah. Yeah, I cut two trees a day, if I'm sure I'm winning on my property.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've talked one around, there are all Rices up there, and Trons, and Thomases.
There's a background trailer right behind Wayne Mary, and that one's a P, a tree up there.
And there's a, there's a lot of limbs up there. We need wind to knock them out, it's just hanging in there two now, it's gonna be dangerous. Have to watch.
The signs for the park, for the playing fields, the dog ordinance signs, have been ordered, and do you, did you get a date?
We're hoping mid to late July. They were on a four to six week, or six to eight week timeframe.
So, we ordered four signs for up there to put on the athletic fields. Was there anything else that you guys thought about up at the park that we needed to do? We fixed that swing set, and now the dog ordinance piece.
No, I can ask, though, I mean...
I wish, yeah, I wish we would, because, you know, that's one of the things we've always kind of prided ourselves in, was trying to keep that...
Well, no, and they actually validated that, because when I joined that board, they said that you guys always agree about everything and getting everything done. There was one bathroom, but I think they fixed it, and then they fixed the bleachers, and then, yeah, the swing that you and I talked about.
And we've got the slides still waiting to go up, right?
Yeah.
I'll ask them. We're working on getting lights there, as you know, so...
Right. The bleachers are painted, I don't know if you...
Oh, they look great, yeah. He came, like, he had that done real quick, so...
He had most paint on him, he did the bleachers.
The batting cage area, is that something that may be used sometime? I'm not thinking about tearing it down, because it can be mowed now, but...
I can ask.
I don't know.
I think people love that, if we could do that. I don't know what happened, that was prior to me being involved, too.
Yeah.
I think the nets got tore up or something, is what I heard, but...
Well, I was at a ballpark here a few weeks ago, and they had taken, like, football turf, and they had gotten large pieces, and that's what they put down under there, so you didn't have to worry about weeds and mowing.
Yeah.
And it gave a decent surface. I assumed there was maybe agri lime under it, but there's some things that could be done, and that'd be utilized, since the poles are already there.
I was thinking that the other day when I was there, but...
Are you guys pretty well done for the season?
Yeah, our season's over. We were hoping to have poles going in and things like that for lights, but with the storm, that's gonna seriously backlog that probably.
Yeah.
Because our IMC was donating poles, so, and they're gonna set the poles, too, but they're very busy right now.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not like you needed them.
It's not an urgent thing.
Right.
I mean, Marshall and Bloomingdale host the entire boys tournament, all of the teams for tournament next year, so we're trying to get it in time for tournament, so we'll see.
Has anyone talked to our IMC about how the power's gonna be drawn in there?
That's, yeah, I mean, it would, it's your property, so it would have to be in your name, in the town's name, but our board was thinking that maybe we paid the power bill for it, and you guys have it in your name.
The power goes into the concession stand. They tried to get power from, directly from the concession stand to the flagpole years ago, and you, because of where the school was where, you couldn't do that. You had to come out the south side and go all the way around.
It's, he works for our IMC, local guy. Can you ever remember his name? But he's doing all the electrical work, he's a local electrician employed by our IMC.
Riley Carr.
Riley Carr.
Okay, I was thinking of that.
So, if you know Riley, he's the one that's kind of advising and all that, so, but he's pretty good now, too, so...
And if it goes through the concession stand, it may be all one bill, but we may not be able to tell how, what it's...
Yeah, but my concern was that power in the concession stand is not big, may not be big enough to handle all the lights.
Yeah, Riley came out and looked at Bloomingdale, I don't know if he came out and looked at Marshall yet or not, so Brad Craycraft was working with Riley on that.
Okay. I mean, it's a pretty sized panel, but I don't know how many, if it's a 200 amp panel or not.
You could sub-meter it.
So, we have to do that, they'd have to do that ahead of time, though, to know...
Well, you would do that if you came through the original meter that we have now, but sub-meter would be what we feed the lights in. That way you can track how many kilowatts are being used after the main meter. Yeah, that's what you...
So, I don't have a lot of answers on that, I guess, but Brad and Riley were the two that were working on that.
Yeah.
Fundraising mechanism.
Okay. Well, after looking at that swing set and a little bit of maintenance there, and then plus the bleachers, which we've, I think, now repaired both sets, in advance of next season, if we knew some things, if not, it's something that the board would wanna...
Yeah, because we're gonna have every single team from, like, 8U all the way through 12U on the boys' side are gonna be in and out of Marshall next year for tournament.
Okay.
Because we host all of it. And same with Bloomingdale, they'll have a bunch of the girls for tournament. We didn't host anybody this year.
Yeah.
So, there'll be a lot more people in and out of there. But yeah, I can ask.
Okay.
We're gonna have an end of year meeting, so...
So, when you talk about handling Sherman's there next year, would you create a lot of activity?
There'll be a lot of people in it.
A lot of people. Like I said, you said they're gonna try to show food, or were you talking about...
They have food in it.
Food truck, or what?
Well, they have, they have hot dogs, barbecues, nachos, pretzels, candy, drinks, they have a bunch of stuff in there.
Well, somebody asked about that, about whether food trucks, is it up?
No, they don't really wanna do that.
Because you...
That's a big funding mechanism for the land.
I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's where we fund most of our stuff.
Right.
Whereas if you do a food truck, they get all that profit.
Right, right.
Well, that's another place, as you think forward, I don't know of anything offhand that needs to be done, because were you replacing the water heater?
They fixed that part of the fence that had a gap in, I think, so I think that's fine now. There was a gap in the fence, but...
This year?
Well, when you did that, had Amish fix that fence?
Yeah, we closed that fence off there, yeah.
That's where we're going, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask if anybody has any ideas, but I wasn't in that concession a whole lot, so I don't really know inside of it what it's like.
Okay.
The fields are in good shape, I mean, we primarily take care of them, so you guys have the moan down.
I think we may wanna look at hand dryers again, their electric hand dryers, and those, and I think one of them, maybe the men's didn't work the last time I was in there.
They just hired their votes.
Yes, yeah. The, I know they had used paper towel, but that's what we ran into, those kids plugged the sink and the toilet completely full of paper towel.
Yeah.
Are there any ADA concerns that need addressed out there?
You know, we addressed that with the sidewalk that goes up into the concession stand, there's a walk that goes around into the restrooms, I think those are compliant in there.
It's pretty level for the most part up there, so...
And the door, it's good, too. I mean, those aren't your standard smaller doors, they're the bigger doors.
So, we have touched on it, you know, if there's, are there things that probably need to be done? Nobody has said, but we would definitely listen to that.
Well, your worst chance would probably be parking on it.
Well, yeah.
I mean, you have some parking, you get...
Really, the parking's owned by the church a lot.
Right.
I mean, as far as where most people park, because otherwise you just have the street.
Actually, the church owns to the edge of the blacktop, and then that gravel all the way over in that alley is town.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what we can actually do to make, enhance that.
The church didn't have anything going on.
Well, and the only time there ever was an issue was there was a showing, or actually, we were actually playing against one of the family members that had the showing, so I mean, ended up, ended up being okay.
Okay.
It's pretty flat parking, too, and there is some blacktop parking, so...
You've got both sides of the church that makes it nice.
You guys really don't have the capacity to put in handicap parking in that area, really, so...
Not really, no. It would be, I guess along in front of the concession stand, that new sidewalk, that green fence, somewhere there might work in some capacity.
But that's, for the most part, just show anyway, because enforcement-wise would be...
Yeah. Okay.
But yeah, I'll ask the rest of that board.
Yeah, I would like to hear from them, if there's anything that they, they saw that they would like to see us touch base on. I did notice the concession stand and the, actually, the whole building is probably gonna be in need of painting. It's been years since that was painted, so we need to consider that, and we could probably put metal around the restroom and the concessions, you know, two sides or three sides. Beyond that, it might be difficult to put steel on, but that would be ideal if we could.
Be ideal, no, why should you have to do it all at once? You could do stages.
Yeah. More, more, not so much cost, it's just they have the serving windows.
Right.
You never use the window over the freezer anymore, do you?
It depends, whoever's in the concession. My daughter was in the concession, and she liked having both windows, because she had one where they bought, and then you'd go and sell.
Good idea, yeah.
But it just, it's volunteer parents mostly, and she thought it'd be cool, because she's 11 and thinks that's neat, so...
Sure. And when she's 13, it won't be neat anymore.
Nothing's neat, yeah. But, yeah, so we used it a couple times this year, I guess, is what I'd say.
Okay, that's good.
And you might use it if you're going to have a lot of people there that have.
Next year's a big year for the boys side. Because this year Kayuga hosted all of it and then next year Turkey Round Youth Association has it. We traditionally use Marshall for the boys and Bloomingdale for the girls. So we're going to have, we're going to be busy.
I mean, we did, I remember those days, yeah.
So, but yeah, I'll ask them. I'll ask about the batting cage too. Roy Reitzman and I were just talking about that the other day, so.
I did like the use of that turf.
Yeah.
Because, you know, before it was growing up in weeds four foot tall.
Right.
And this.
Lowers the maintenance on it.
Yeah, agri lime around, under it and it did.
Rockville has something like that that they were doing, but they didn't do the whole cage. They just did the batting area.
Yeah.
So, but.
How do you treat the fields? I noticed when I was up there the other day that weeds are now coming back pretty quick.
Um, we.
Or do you treat it?
Yeah, it was Phil Woods and Brad Kraykraft did that since they're certified, licensed, whatever you have to be. And so I don't know what they're spraying it with, but that's who did it.
Okay.
I think Brad did Bloomingdale. I think Phil did Marshall. But, so they would know that.
Yeah.
We're probably going to get more lime delivered for the field though, so that's probably going to cover that. So we should probably kill that before we cover it.
Yeah. And you can kill it early enough that there's nothing residual when the kids get back on it.
Right. They sprayed it early before the season and then like weeks passed and we played. But then towards the end of the year, it started to grow back.
Yeah.
But that's who does it because they're licensed to do it, so.
Okay.
Wasn't me.
Yeah. All right, we're down to the point. Nick, do you have anything?
Um, just a couple of things. These are just ones that we have judgments in, Stanley and Houston. We've got judgments. They're, you know, they've been fined. They're accruing interest. From what I can tell, they've not done anything to cure the properties unless somebody else thinks otherwise.
Houston property, they have been working on replacing the roof. They have been working on.
He told, he told me he'd reach back out to me once he got it in a shape. Yeah, it's a.
It's his, his uncle.
Yeah, he's a relative. I can't remember who he said. I've not heard anything out of Stanley's. And then the Kings, I thought we talked and you guys had authorized me to dismiss that. Is that right?
Well, we're going to, we have a new ordinance violation on the Kings.
Oh, is it? The old one, they removed what I cited them for.
Okay.
And now that.
Yeah. So we released that, but we have a new one because they haven't, they haven't touched it.
I've got the, your copy in my car.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. So that was the other one I had a question about.
So Stanley's was on the property or on the sidewalk?
That's on the sidewalk. There's a judgment, 225683.
Okay, so I thought that was the sidewalk.
And it's accruing interest at 8%. And Houston's, there's a judgment for the fine on the ordinance violation. So I haven't been doing anything with those. The judgments are in place. They're accruing interest. It's a lien on the properties.
Okay.
So anything that they own that has their name on it will have a lien on it because of that. So at some point, usually people come forward and want to fix that. So Kings, you answered that. The corner store, is there anything that I need to be doing on that at this point or leave it be?
I just, I think leave it be right now.
I don't want to do it.
I don't know either.
So yeah, I was just kind of wanting guidance on those things.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
I wanted to talk to Brady about the corner a lot down here too. Because to my eye, it looks like they got rid of their chickens, but I could be wrong about that.
I think they did.
They put a pool there, didn't they?
Yeah. So I didn't know what we want to do with that property or not. I guess Brady and I can talk.
Going back to corner store, I had to ask them to consider getting those lines off and across the sidewalk. I said, right now you're, you know, you're working, this was two, at least two months ago. But it is, it's getting to the point now they probably ought to find another way to get it to a drain.
Yeah, it's on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It is bad.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a hazard, trip hazard because it goes across the sidewalk.
And there will be this winter when it starts freezing.
So I wonder what they did with all that water before.
They just filled the basement. Seriously, I mean, that's, they didn't do anything with it. And it went into a restaurant and then they used their some pump to pump it. I think maybe through the septic system, I don't know.
I almost think I looked at the source where it's coming from.
Yeah. Yeah, going back to the corner, I've been by there a couple of times. I don't see any of those animals.
I have neither. Okay. Because that's mainly what we had them on was that and if those are gone, I guess.
Unless they've got them in the garage or the house.
They're not outside.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I just, updates on those things. So I mean, that's mainly what I got, so.
Yeah.
See what Brady's got on that and proceed with it, so.
There's a couple of more that I hope you, the one there at the Baptist Church on the corner, that they need one of these.
Yeah, I tried twice to make contact there. They wanted a door for me, so I'm just going to leave one on the door.
Okay. I think they just used that back door.
Yeah, it's all grown up.
Yeah, the neighbors are complaining quite, quite a bit about that.
They saw me outside there the last time I went there. They were looking at me. I'm not for 10 minutes.
Yeah.
The one at the corporate church.
Well, there's two houses.
Each one.
Does John Iver still own that? Yeah.
But yeah.
Okay, we'll talk about a couple others if we're going to take it up there. Anything else, Nick? Brady?
I got the Kings. So they asked what to do with it and they're not acting like they're going to do anything with it. So I think they may mow it, but.
Yeah.
He was not very happy, so.
Well, I think that makes two of us.
Is that manual and fanny still?
So while I talked to the mother the first time, because her husband is the one that owned it. And she said that they would get taken care of, so they didn't. So I went back and they always say that the manual's the one that runs everything, so.
Yeah.
I went and gave him the ordinance license. It's in his name.
I'll probably just join that to whatever I have instead of dismissing it.
Right. Yeah, I'm getting a lot of complaints down there because of the animals, the skunks and the coons that are at that house. And it doesn't sound.
The last one I did was I circled the abandoned property and the vegetation so they can get to, so.
Well, they got that, we're still talking about the Amish one. They've got that dishwasher set out for us.
Yeah, now they do.
Yeah, it's been setting up for a.
I included that in this one.
Yeah.
All right. I'll guess a new court date on that then.
And if they're going to tear it down, just have them get ahold of us and we'll do a building permit and they can get it out of there.
Right.
I think they just, the dad owned it and they just don't want anything to do with it, so.
But they don't want to sell it because they had an offer and they didn't think it was enough money, so they weren't going to sell it.
Then we need to look at the one down here where the house.
I don't understand why they're owning it before it began, right?
Yeah. That's an ongoing one.
Which ones are?
Where the house burnt.
Oh.
Down here.
That was a while.
Yeah, they've got a huge limb that came down in that storm and was pushed over, back over onto their property. You're going to have to run down and down.
Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to find them. I can't find them.
Well, I think they're Tangier or Kingman.
Kingman somewhere.
So should be able to get ahold of somebody at Kingman, I'll tell you.
I got in our CAD system, looked for family members, tried calling them. I couldn't find the current address, so.
I think he's still getting mail, I think.
What's his name? The guy that lived there and went on fire.
What was he, a Smith?
He's a Smith, but yeah.
I'm going to tell you this.
Anyway. I say, anyway, that's who.
Yeah.
I guess I can look it up, but yeah.
I can just put one on the door, I guess.
Yeah.
At the camper that said.
On the door of the abandoned house?
The camper's gone.
The camper.
It's gone.
Oh, the camper's gone?
Well, unless, I think it is.
I thought it was back down there again. I thought it was toward the back.
Yeah.
Anyway. Yeah.
If I can't run down, I'll just put somewhere on the property.
Does Kingman have a officer?
They had one for a little while.
Do they? Okay.
You know who it is now?
No, I don't know his name.
Just stop in at one of the patent places up there. You'll get all the information. That, that needs to be taken care of. Okay. Anything else that you have for us?
Nope.
Tom?
No, we're good.
The water usage went down for a while. It's now back up to 25,421. So I don't know how much of that is just the heat in the summer. My CAD system did.
Yeah.
Kathy, what do you have for us?
Nothing.
Okay. Dale, you have anything?
I'm working on the budget, but no.
Okay.
So.
You have anything else for us, Dave?
No, I don't have any.
All right. We have nothing else for tonight. We'll.